All right, thank you all for coming and being here with us this evening. My name is Lacey Richards. On behalf of the West Haven Public Party, we appreciate you being here. A big thanks to the cities down for hosting us tonight and making the facility available. Thank you to the candidates for participating. Just a reminder, if you are not registered to vote or not registered to vote at your current address, that is easy to fix. Vote at utah.gov, the online shopping shop for all that. There are QR codes hanging around the room. That will take you to some additional information, candidate contact information, as well as questions that are different than the ones that we asked here tonight. If you want to get some better information about the candidates. Uh, Jackson Lee, the vice chair of the West Haven Public Party is going to be our moderator tonight, and I'll turn it over to him.
Thanks, Lacey. Um, just wanna thank everybody for coming tonight and um, just want to mention a couple of things. Uh, we are recording this and streaming this on uh, we're streaming it live on Facebook, then we're recording it and we'll put it on YouTube. So if everybody could please, um, if you have conversations, side conversations, you can take a phone call, whatever, so it might happen, um, please take it outside. Um, also, um, just want to thank everybody for being here and uh, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Uh, we're gonna have a prayer by David Smith, and then Commissioner Bowles will leave us in the pledge, and then I'll explain um, how this is gonna work.
Pardroning father, we're thankful that we're able together here this evening as citizens of West Haven and for the candidates that have put in their time and dedication to want to serve and their desires to continue and improve the our city. And we ask at this time to, to bless them and give them the open minds and that they'll be able to provide the answers that citizens may be wanting or needing to hear and the directions that they would like to see the city move forward and, and these things we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I'm out of the audience to rise and please repeat, "Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Okay, thank you so much, all right. Um, uh, we have Bruce Anderson, he's gonna be our timekeeper today. Um, we're going to, uh, what's gonna happen is we're gonna have an introduction by each of the candidates. Um, each candidate is gonna have ninety seconds to introduce themselves, and then after that we'll go into questions. We have questions that have been presented from members of the public, and uh, I've got eleven of them here, so we'll see if we can get through them all. Uh, each candidate will have sixty seconds to um, answer the question, and then we'll just keep going down the line. Um, I believe we started with Clarence, I think you're gonna be first, and then we'll just, um, after the first question, we'll start um, with Kami, and then so on and so forth. I'm sorry, my two hearts are broken, I apologize. Uh, and then Bruce, right here, he's gonna be our timekeeper. Uh, he has three papers, one for thirty seconds, one for fifteen seconds, and then a stop. So, um, just pay attention to that, and um, just wanna remind the audience that we uh, wanna keep decorum, so we're not going to allow the uh, there's not gonna be any rebuttals from the candidates, and um, it's just gonna be answer the question and move on. Please keep the applause till the end of the event, so we can get through the, through the, all the questions. And um, like I said, try to be respectful, um, we're not gonna be booing people, and we're not gonna try to talk over anybody, um, so we're not uh, we're not on Fox News uh, having to debate the president, so we can, we can go with that, but uh, a shameless joke. Anyways, um, all right, so we'll go ahead and get started. Clarence, if you wanna start, and again, we'll have ninety seconds, so just introduce yourself, and we'll um, we'll go from there.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight, and I encourage you to share, share what you learned here tonight with your neighbors and friends around you. Um, and also, it's great to know that a timekeeper that shows up right on time is probably gonna be the perfect timekeeper for us. My name's Clarence Kelly. Um, I grew up here in Weaver County, born in Ogden, raised in Roy, uh, went to Weaver State University after graduating, uh, up in Wa- the state of Washington for ten years, and then after that, we moved back here to West Haven. What drew us to West Haven? Uh, we were house hunting, and my wife saw these little baby calves that were being raised at a dairy, and she said, "Those are cute, we should live here," and that brought us to West Haven. But we do love West Haven, uh, we've been here now eighteen years. We have four children, all married now, uh, five grandchildren now, as of a few days ago. And uh, anyway, we absolutely love it. We've been involved here in West Haven, uh, really since we got here. Our children, right off, got involved with the Youth City Council. Uh, that, of course, meant as supportive parents, we became involved with Youth City Council and all the events. Um, anyways, we love this, this city, and we just wanna be a part of the decisions being made as we represent each of you, so thank you.
Uh, my name's Carrie Call. I have lived here in this community for almost thirty years. I went to Fremont High, I graduated from Weaver State. Um, my husband and I bought some property here because we wanted space for our kids, so we live on Three and a Half acres with, with all sorts of animals and children. My kids are age nine to eighteen, I have five kids. And uh, our privilege to have them here, I'm grateful that they came. I've been on the city council for almost four years now. I ran uh, in the last term because of the path that our city was headed, and I didn't like it, so that is why I ran. Um, we've made a lot of changes, and I'm excited to see those continue, and that's why I chose to run again.
Hi, I'm Jim McGregor. Uh, lived in West Haven for twenty years. Uh, in fact, when we moved to West Haven, we bought Rob Vanderwood's house, and we've absolutely loved that neighborhood property. Uh, like a lot of people who live in West Haven, we initially moved here to have animals. Uh, my wife is an equestrian, and it was getting very expensive for me to keep a horse at a boarding facility, and so um, having an eater to put a horse on has been quite advantageous to us financially. Um, I've raised my kids here, uh, see a lot of my neighbors in the audience, appreciate their support tonight. Um, I'm running to give people a choice on ballot. Um, I get very frustrated when I get my mail-in ballot, and I have uh, one choice for any given office, so if I'm gonna seek to solve the problem, I better step up and uh, be willing to put my name, uh, for my hat in the ring, as it were. So, I'm excited to be here tonight, and I wish all the candidates the best of luck.
Hi, I'm Kim Dixon. To tell you a little bit about me, my husband Ken and I recently celebrated our fiftieth wedding anniversary on October fifth. So obviously, I got married when I was five. Um, I grew up in Plain City, and Ken grew up in West Weaver. We raised our family in West Weaver, moving to West Haven in um, two thousand and one. We had four married children and twelve amazingly perfect grandchildren. Ken retired as a battalion chief with the Weaver Fire District, and I retired as an operations manager after thirty-six years with the federal government. My expertise there was in budget and staffing. In two thousand and eighteen, along with Carrie, I was concerned about the rapid growth in West Haven and decided that I would step out and run for city council. Even after almost four years on the council, every week I still learned something. It is amazing to be a part of something so dynamic. I've enjoyed working with our staff and with our council, and I am so excited about the future of our city that I decided that I would run for reelection.
Hi, my name is Sharon Hilton, and I'm in West Haven, I've been in West Haven for thirty-three years. Dear, my mic come on? Thank you. Me, my husband, and my dumb daughter. Been here thirty-two years, like I said, I have two children, five grandchildren, and um, I just love West Haven. And I'm running because I want to be a part of it. I've always wanted to be a part of it for some time now, but I've just been too busy with grandchildren. I've got some grandchildren with autism, and I've just been helping out in a family way. And it was my time, it was my turn, and we need some diversity, and some fresh ideas, some culture, because culture is here in our state and is, is not gone anywhere, and so here I am, ready to work and uh, do what I can to help our community.
All right, thank you so much. Um, we'll dive into the questions. Um, again, these are from, uh, both from the public, they submitted these questions, and uh, we also, just before the event began, gave each candidate a question, uh, or a copy of the questions for, for their reference. Um, I'll ask a question, and then I'll ask the candidates to respond. Um, for those that are here tonight, we also have QR codes, and there are some more, um, over here, there are some more question and answers. Um, all right, so Clarence, we'll start with you this time, and this question is, "Please describe your personal community involvement in West Haven. How have you helped make a positive impact? What is your vision for West Haven's future, and how will you work towards that vision?"
So, I kinda mentioned it in my introduction, uh, my involvement with West Haven. Like I say, really, ever since we moved here, we've been involved uh, with numerous events on the Youth City Council, uh, supporting our children. Uh, since they have now grown and moved out, and we've emptied the nest, my wife and I have become much more involved, also on the events committee uh, for the city. Uh, we've been involved with West Haven Days, helping in the planning of that, and running the uh, baby contest, which we've actually enjoyed doing very much. Um, and, and then we help with fall rodeo, uh, anything that we can and where we can find time, we get involved and we help as much as we can. So my vision is, more than anything, I would like to see us reunify as a city. I feel that we have become divided and that we need to unify, so that's, that's what my vision is, is making that happen.
Uh, my, my major involvement with the city began nearly seven years ago, when I saw the path that we were on, and I started attending meetings, especially about a development that was near me, and felt very, um, not heard, so that's why I got involved at that time. I attended every planning commission meeting and council meeting that I could, every week, before I ran for council. I felt it important to know um, what was happening, what are, what are the issues? What, how does the budget function, and what are the things within our city? And decided to run, and so for the last four years, like I said, I've been serving here on the council. I enjoy thoroughly being involved in all of the events. Council members are not asked to attend all of those, but I do because I love it and have to help where I can, um, because I, I do enjoy it. I feel like we're not as divided maybe as Clarence feels, I feel like we've come together quite a bit in the last little bit, and I wanna see that continue.
So there's a few trees that are in the community that I helped plant, and I will have a cemetery and various parks. In years past, I've been more involved civically than I would say in recent years. Um, I was on Facebook for quite a while, and I actually livestreamed a lot of city meetings several years ago, and I kinda became disillusioned with Facebook, um, or probably most of you know why. Um, but I have been, I'm also involved in facilitating a lot of Eagle Scout projects several years ago, Boy Scouts is still an active organization, community. Um, and so yeah, I have uh, helped on a lot of service projects around the city. Recently, uh, since I've been running for uh, city council, I've been uh, attending meetings, both in person and virtually, uh, to try to get better informed as to what are the issues in the city.
Well, I will admit that I was one of those keeping all that, didn't really worry a lot about what was going on in the city. Um, I was working and raising our family, and so until it began to directly impact me, I kind of was just um, watching it go by. As soon as I found that it was going to impact me, and I began to get worried about the direction that we were going, I decided that I would get involved. We had many community meetings, um, talking about what we would like to see, what we would like to do, and we um, I decided at that time that I would go ahead and, and run. Since that time, I have been over the youth council, which I love, I love the youth of our city and the many activities they have. I've also just started with a historical committee, which I'm really excited about. It seems like when West Heath, where, excuse me, Wilson and Canesville came together, we kinda lost that community for each of those cities, and we're trying to restore that, so I'm really excited about the direction we're going.
Hey, I've been involved with the community by delivering your mail for over twenty years. Uh, I'm a former mail carrier, retired, so I've been busy with that and working six days a week, so I haven't had a lot of involvement there, other than making sure you have packages in your mail, what have you. But um, so I've always kinda waited for this moment, and I've had friends that have ran that are in political positions. I never mentioned it to them, but I always, it was always in the back of my mind, so I've always known I was going to do it, and I just felt the proper time and decided I could make a difference. If nothing else, I, maybe I can encourage someone else of uh, different cultures to come up and do what I've done, have the courage to come and run, and you know, stand for something.
All right, thank you so much. All right, uh, we're gonna move to question two, Carrie, we'll start with you on this question. Um, "Is it common for candidates to make promises about transparency in fact?" That's probably every promise that I think every candidate I've ever talked to has promised transparency. Um, "What does transparency mean to you? Do you find it appropriate to have closed-door meetings on a regular basis? What specific actions would you take to promote increased transparency in West Haven City Council?"
You're right, transparency is something that I did know before, and I do feel that it is still for transparency means that you've really laid it all out there, and very available. If you're gonna ask a question, I'm certainly gonna answer it. I've, I've answered, I think, all the emails that I have received, um, and some of those answers they don't like because they don't understand the process, but I hope to educate them and try to make, you know, figure out a solution for them. Um, I encourage others to, to subscribe to the public notice website, so you will automatically receive those to your inbox and know what is happening in the city, so you see those agendas, because residents get frustrated that they didn't know what's happening until it already happened. But if you can have that come to you ahead of time, then, then that's helpful. Um, closed-door meetings, I think, are important, and they're only used for certain things. The city is not doing anything that it should not be doing, and it's only to, to discuss some confidential things.
Thank you.
Jim? I agree, sometimes transparency is thrown around like a cliche, um, but uh, transparency, I really, actually, to, to credit the current city council and mayor and the current government, um, I feel like I've never been informed or never known informed about what's going on in the city. Uh, the newsletter, the agenda minutes are on the web, um, I think the city does a great job, and, and really, I mean, they're going out of their way to try to make sure the citizens are informed of what's going on, and I do appreciate that quite a bit. And I would wanna continue that, um, uh, to maintain a high level, high standard of transparency, communication to the community. Um, as far as closed-door meetings, I, I agree with Ms. Call. Um, there are appropriate times to have closed-door meetings, uh, especially where it intersects with legal issues, um, and so yeah, I think there's, there's time and place for those as well.
I agree, I think that transparency is very important, and I think that our councils work really hard on trying to make sure that we are very transparent in our decisions. Uh, I also think that there are times for closed-door meetings, executive sessions, and it seems, it might seem to you like we've had a lot of them lately, but they are held for specific purposes, that we have um, had to do that. We, um, in order to increase our transparency, I would just suggest to you that they, we try a lot to be transparent. We try with our meetings online, with our YouTube sessions, with our Facebook sessions. You can call or email any of us anytime about any kinds of questions. Again, as Carrie says, sometimes the answers are not what you want to hear, but there is a reason behind that, and so we would be, I would be happy to, you know, kind of help you understand that, thanks.
I'm gonna echo what they say about transparency, it's very important to be transparent, because I won't tolerate anything else that's just within my personality. I'm very honest, they're not gonna tell like it is. And um, as far as closed-door meetings, I don't have a problem with those, because I feel like sometimes they are necessary. So, I'm okay with that, I'm not, maybe this is for another question down the line, so I'll just hold that thought and, and wait, but uh, I'm good on transparency.
Well, once again, like all the others, transparency, I, uh, we need to make sure that we're always being transparent. As far as closed-door sessions, there may be times when, when they are required, but that really needs to be thought about, um, a lot before that decision's made, because we need to be as transparent as possible. Um, I think there are some things we could do, because we know that the city is very open, they are very transparent, and that if you reach out, then you can find out. But what could we do to possibly reach out to them? We know we have a newsletter that goes out, maybe uh, there's always a mayor's message in there, but maybe we let the, the city council also take, each one of them report on things that they're doing, uh, to maybe provide a little more transparency there, and talk about issues that have come up, and the way they voted, and maybe why they voted that way. Um, but maybe we reach out a little bit more in that transparency, instead of expecting everybody to come to us.
Thank you. All right, uh, Ms. McGregor, you're, you're up next. Uh, question three. Utah State Code says that municipalities shall facilitate a reasonable opportunity for a variety of housing, including moderate-income housing to meet the needs of people of various income levels living, working, or desiring to live or work in the community, and to allow people with various incomes to benefit from and fully participate in all aspects of neighborhood and community life. So here's the question. If elected, do you intend to comply with this requirement of the law? Why or why not, and if so, how?
Uh, personally, state yes, we would intend to comply with the requirements of the law. Um, this is probably the hot button issue for a community, and it has been for the twenty years that I've lived here. Growth is, uh, is, has been a challenge, or an opportunity, depending on how you look at it. Um, while I'm speaking on this topic, I want to applaud the land use law meeting that's gonna be held next week on October twenty-fourth. Uh, I attended that meeting about four or five years ago. We should become educated on what the city can and cannot do in terms of land use, because I think that's a big source of frustration for everybody with all the growth that is happening. And so, before you complain about it, you should educate yourself on it. So I think, I, I can't really emphasize, I'm not intending that meeting enough. Um, but coming back on how to comply with that, I think, you know, the word "shall" in legal terms has a low weight and impact to it in the first part of that statement for the, the code of my law. Um, if we don't follow, then I would say no.
Thank you for being prompt by that, I appreciate that.
Oh, uh, this is my hot button issue, and I, I think that sometimes the legislature and developers will uh, equate high-density housing with moderate-income housing, which any of you know, in West Haven, there is not a lot of moderate-income housing, if any, and having high density does not equate to moderate-income housing. We just need to state that right up front. Uh, will we comply with the law? Of course we will. The legislature has given us many opportunities to decide how we will do that. That being said, the legislature is every year kind of closing the, the opportunity for cities to choose how they will develop, and I think that's something that we need to be really, really interested in, as, as the legislature means. Again, high density does not equate to moderate housing. If I knew the answer, I would run for governor or something like that, but we will comply with the law.
Okay, regarding the moderate-income housing, is here, we needed, what I don't like is there's so many vacancies, because they're just not affordable. Now, I don't know how we handle that at this point, later maybe I'll figure it out, someone can educate me on it, yeah, but it's just a little bit of an issue for me. Um, but, maybe we can figure it out, but it is an issue. I just don't like seeing all the vacancies and vacant apartments and the vacant houses and the, you know, so, gonna work on that one. But if it is law, then you know, whatever the law says, I'll, I'm always, you know, gonna work with the, with the law. I won't be breaking any laws, people, it's not that I am.
Thank you.
Well, I, I agree with a number of things that you mentioned. First of all, yes, we do need to comply with the law, and, and yes, I would. Um, but it doesn't mean that we wouldn't come back and, and try to explain why we feel like we've already met these requirements here in West Haven, because we certainly have had a lot of high-density housing, hoping that it would be, be lower, lower income, but it doesn't, you're right. West Haven is a very desirous place to live, and it brings people in, even if that means they have to pay a little higher rent for it. That's good on our part, that means we've got a beautiful city and people wanna come. Um, but on the other hand, supply and demand will always be the, the factor with this. I own two rental properties, not here in West Haven, they actually have a, a, a base, but I just made the decision not to raise my rent, as both leases can do, because of that reason, and the rent's not going up anymore, and I wasn't gonna raise it. I, supply and demand simply was my decision on that, so that's the same thing here in West Haven.
If you listen to any of these meetings that we've had, I am a large, I'm a huge proponent for larger lots. Um, when it says here, "A reasonable opportunity for a variety of housing," I think everybody automatically turns to townhouses or apartments or twin homes. I would like to see more single-family lots. If they're like, um, it's limiting, so what we need on the small lots, if they're more affordable, why, the city should also provide opportunities for homeowners and indoor lots. Um, the question here also says that they may fully participate in uh, aspects of neighborhood and community life. If you look at West Haven days, there's a huge variety of people there, right? We provide all kinds of things for a lot of different uh, people, right? It's not just one type, as Clarence has said, he does the baby contest, which is super fun. We have early, we have all these events to accommodate these various, various levels of income and those that desire to live there.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Dixon, this one is, uh, you're up first on this question. Compared with nearby cities, some of West Haven's impact fees for business developments are significantly higher. Some people think this is positive because it may limit growth, some people think this is negative because it may limit growth. What is your opinion? Would you advocate any changes in impact fees?
Well, actually, we are looking at this right now as a city, as a city council. One of the things that we have found is that, um, one of the benefits of having a city manager is for us to be able to take a step back and look at some of these things and compare them with other cities and what they should be. I don't think an impact fee should be higher or lower than it needs to be, it, it needs to be what it is, what is the impact on West Haven. I will advocate that we are looking to see what our impact fees will be, and if it needs to be, I will, I will vote for a change.
Well, the business developments with the significantly higher impact fees, it's probably because they know West Haven's a hotspot, so money grabbers, that's my opinion. So, um, I think it's probably a negative thing. Sure, we'll get money from it, but I, I'm just not sure about that, hopeful about that. My opinion would be, uh, to maybe look into some, advocating some changes on those impact fees, you know, do some comparisons and see where the other cities are. Because I don't like to live in a place where just because I live here and it's popular, you wanna charge me an excess amount just for a bean, so I just, I like fairness. So, I just, I like fairness.
Thank you.
So, these impact fees are important to West Haven, and the citizens of West Haven, they help us avoid that city tax, it's been talked about before and brought up before. It's a way of bringing income to the city. Does it slow growth down? It does, but is that necessarily a bad thing at this time? West Haven's seen a huge amount of growth, and astronomical. I looked up the population of West Haven, and it's just going skyrocket. Is it okay to slow it down? In my mind, yes, so I think it wouldn't be a terrible thing. On the other hand, those businesses, impact fees for businesses, businesses also bring in income through sales tax and so forth. So, it's maybe a little bit of a wash, but it would, it would be something you'd have to compare. What are the fees bringing in versus what would these new businesses bring in on sales tax? You have to look at the numbers and the numbers decide, and then also decide, do we want this best growth?
Just like Kim said, we are actually looking at this when, when situations arise, and it becomes apparent, like, oh yeah, we haven't looked at that, we need to do that. We've had more and more of that, as we've hired a city planner, a dedicated city planner, that has found a lot of deficiencies in the city, because those have never been updated, those things have never been changed. And right now, we're at those, the impact, and should pay for it, the business should pay for the impact that it creates. We don't need more than that, but we need to make sure that it covers that cost.
It's a balance. We wanna be able to attract business and commercial businesses to our community, so that our citizens can shop and spend their money locally. I had that comment from one of my neighbors, a grocery store, it's probably something we've heard a lot about in discussion amongst the community. So, I like the fact that the current council's looking, gonna look at the data, and do an analysis, and basically make a data-driven decision on whether to raise fees or lower fees accordingly. I think it's a balance, if you wanna attract business, and you don't want to be too overestimating business owners. I had another neighbor who said, hey, the businesses shouldn't shoulder the over, and I agree with that.
Perfect, thank you. All right, next question. West Haven City recently committed $3.2 million to expand the gym at the new junior high school, which is currently under construction. In return, the city will have access to the gym facilities on weekends, and after 5:30 PM on weekdays. Elected officials are currently spending approximately an additional $5 million to build a community art center next to City Hall. Here's the question. Do you support this plan? Why or why not? And I believe around Ms. Hilton.
Did you say, I'm looking at it as elected officials are considering spending? Considering?
Yes.
I haven't done, started any foundational groundbreaking. They're gonna do this next to City Hall. My question is for this, just for this, is, does that mean the senior building is totally off the table, future? Is that what that means? That's my question. They were gonna build a senior center here, but I guess we didn't get the grant money for that.
I'm sorry, I don't have the answer to that, I just have the question in front of me.
Looking for that, so I'm thinking $5 million to build a community art center next to City Hall. I'm not sure that's feasible, and I would like to, you know, know a little bit more about that plan before I say, yeah, I'm with it, or not. Because I want my senior citizen to be more represented, more than once a month.
Thank you. Mr. Call.
First of all, kudos to the decision to build the gym at the junior high. That was a great move. Not only did we get to use it, what more would we wanna use it anyway? But the school district takes care of the upkeep of that building, so that's a good move. As far as a, an art center next to City Hall, spending is all about timing. And right now, every, with this high inflation that everyone's going through, maybe not the best time to be spending that kind of money. It doesn't mean that in the future, we wouldn't go there, I just think now might not be the best time. See, there's times when you need to tighten your belt, and there's times when things are well, and you can do a little more spending. I think now is the time we should be tightening our belts a little bit more.
I, I do support the plan of building a community center, this, like Clarence said, that that's a timing thing. The city, I don't believe, is looking to, I guess there's varying opinions. Do we fund all of that, or we get grants to do part of that? That's a major difference. We own the land, that's a benefit as well, because you're applying for these grants, because you're not spending the money also to do that. We've discussed the community art centers being, fulfilling several different needs. So, we have a lot of variety, like we were just talking about in the community, that we hope to design it in such a way that it will benefit a lot of different members of the community, that's not just specifically for art. Definitely for seniors, and we've talked about that as well. We've discussed recreational facilities, we gotta find the right balance of what to create and put there at the right time.
To address the first part of the question, regarding multi-use with school buildings and school gym facilities, I'm in total support of that. We pay above our taxes to the Weaver County School District, I don't know, I think they're the biggest line item on property tax, but not mistaken. They build very expensive capital buildings, capital expenditures. And if we as a city can leverage those gym facilities for recreation, I'm all for that. I think that's a smart, improved move. As far as the community art center, I love what Ms. Call said about, maybe it's not fully dedicated for community arts, it could be a multipurpose building. Each time you're gonna build a building, we should try to make it a multipurpose facility, so that many different types of citizens and citizen activities can get use out of it.
I agree. We were so excited to be able to partner with the junior high. I mean, how often in your city's history do you have a junior high built within your city, that you can do that? I mean, that's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to partner with a school district to improve your recreational program. And I think that's one of our greatest accomplishments that we've made so far. As far as the art center, as Carrie said, we're thinking about a lot of things. Do we do grants? We own the land, you know, the timing, what do we want it to look like? We've gone through several ideas. We want to make sure that it will be a building that will meet our needs for many years to come. And so, whether we do that now, or whether we wait, is the decisions that we're discussing and trying to decide. But it won't be without a lot of input from the city, as far as what we decide to do, and what you feel. So, more to come on that.
All right, next question. This is a good topic, I think it's on for many of us. As we are all aware, inflation has impacted many aspects of life, including the cost of living, and, as a result, employee retention. What is your philosophy on city employee compensation? And how do you plan to retain good employees? Mr. Kelly, you're up.
I've never owned a business myself, I know some good businessmen that are obviously having an impact with this, finding good employees and keeping those good employees. I believe a key, obviously, is compensation. We need to compensate them, especially our good employees, we don't wanna lose them. And so, we need to keep them, but it's not always money that will keep them. Good benefits, even more of a family-filled type benefits, that just makes them feel at home, makes them enjoy working for West Haven, and makes them want to stay. I think we can do those things, and I've seen it done. I have a wonderful neighbor of mine that owns a business, and his, his employees really are family. We can talk in more detail, I'll tell you things if you have some amount of time. But anyway, that's what we can do, we can make them wanna stay.
I agree, it's a great, a great environment here, I think we do have some phenomenal employees. It is, it's their own family, these employees, they really love it here. This was discussed in the last budget cycle, because the council had been asking kind of for a methodology of employee compensation. So at the moment, there's a committee that's reviewing that, to determine, how do we move forward in having a compensation policy? There was discussion this year about the call-up that the employees receive or did not receive. And there were different council members that wanted to give them the full amount, and those that didn't want to give them any. And I feel that we need to pay our employees, they deserve, they are the face of the city. They're out there doing that work, they're answering the calls. And I, that was my vote, to give them that call-up this year.
I too would have supported the co-adjustment. You have to pay your people, inflation's a real thing. People are out there working, trying to survive, we're all, we're all, we're all burning. We're in a mountain household, there's budgetary constraints now. I think you, it's prudent to follow HR market research, comparables, you know. You can't shoot the minimum with everybody, but you can at least give them a decent cost-of-living adjustment. And I think you can, I think there's probably room for merit. Merit increases as well through a standard annual review process, I think that's pretty industry-standard stuff. So yes, we should pay our city employees fairly and appropriately, and help them work through the inflation at times, just like we all are.
This was a big discussion in our budget sessions this year, and I was very championing the cost-of-living adjustment, because of the great inflation that we've had. We are currently looking at a new personal policy where we can reward merit increases. We can reward people for doing their jobs, and doing good jobs. But I will always, I will always say that within any merit process, we need to have the availability of offering a call-up adjustment for inflation.
Absolutely. You have good employees, in order to keep those employees, you gotta give them something, some type of incentives, some benefits, some extra benefits, to let them know that they're appreciated. I ran a food business, food dinner business for over 30 years. I tell you, I kept the same people for 30 years, did I not? I kept the same kids, the same families. I kept them, because I had to know I appreciated them, I gave the raises accordingly. And they worked hard for me, and I appreciated them, and they knew it. So, in order, you gotta do that a lot of times, to just let people know you care, and you've gotta increase their income, or you'll lose them. And you're gonna have to also, in addition to that, let them know that they're appreciated, and that they're doing a good job. Because if not, people will leave. So, I'm proud of that, because no one ever let me.
The majority of our city parks were created by clustering nearby housing to leave public open spaces. Are you in favor of preserving more public open spaces through clustering? If not, what alternative do you recommend, and how would you pay for it? Or, why are you not in favor of preserving additional public open spaces? And Ms. Call, we'll start with you.
I've never been a fan of clustering. I, and I know there's been a lot of discussion, especially among the planning commission, on how to design our neighborhoods, and where we put those houses, and having a variety of lot sizes. Open space could have many definitions. What's public open space to one may not be to another. And I'm not a fan of clustering the neighborhoods to create a pocket park, right? To create that open space, which just meant it's that small community, and not the citizens as a whole, for the most part. They don't even know it exists unless they drive back down there. To me, having more open space truly means having our homes farther apart. We don't have to have a park that says, this is open, when we create our subdivisions in a way that makes it feel open. That's my opinion.
I would admit, I do like having my house on an acre where I'm very far apart from my neighbors. That is admittedly a great thing, I enjoy it here in West Haven. I'm a little, a little mixed on this one, to be honest with you. I can see the pros and cons of having a kind of a more intimate neighborhood park for a given subdivision, versus spacing those ones out a little bit more. Maybe there is an opportunity for, maybe you can advocate you too, if you can have both. Maybe you can have some neighborhoods that have clustering, and people can choose to live there, or you can zone for larger lots, and people can choose to live there.
I am not a fan of clustering personal parks either. One of the problems that we have with that is the maintenance of those parks, and getting the landlords, and and all the things it takes to maintain those public parks by our public workspeople. So I, currently, we are looking at a park plan, we're looking at all of our parks, and what we would like to do with them, what they should look like, and also a plan to create more parks. So, I would like to see a plan where we look and decide, if we need more parks, where can we put them? And how can we arrange them, so that they will benefit the residents of the community?
I'm not a fan of the clustering either. As far as the open spaces, I like the open spaces. And sometimes I think, how many parks do we need? How often are they occupied, other than when there's a special event? So I have to give that one some thought, but I like the open spaces. That's what threw me here, that's what keeps me here, because I do have open space still, but so I'm, the public open spaces is what I...
I would have to say I'm a little open on this. I do like, I do like the larger lots, I do like subdivisions that are a little more spaced out, I've always liked that. However, I do know that not everybody thinks the same way I do. And I'm not here for myself, I'm here to represent the residents of West Haven. I do know our younger generation kinda likes living closer together, and they kinda like their little intimate parks. And so, once again, but I do think we have a lot already, and I think we have a lot of parks. And I do understand the upkeep of those parks is always gonna be an expense to the city. And so, we need to keep that in mind as well. So, like I say, I would be more open to see, what does the residents of West Haven want? And then, to plan and develop according to that.
We're almost there. Okay, what obligations, if any, do elected officials have to a standard of behavior in their interactions with members of the public, applicants, planning commissioners, et cetera? What does that standard look like in practice? Do you see any issues with the way the standard is, or is not during an event? Mr. McGregor.
First of all, I would compliment all of the current city officials that I've interacted with. I don't see that we've ever had the behavioral problems that maybe other communities have seen in their interactions between citizens and elected officials. But as far as what the standard of behavior looks like, I've always held myself to the concept of professionalism. In whatever role in your place, whether that be the workplace, or any other organization, one should conduct themselves with professionalism. And I would hope that I meet that standard in my own conduct within the community and my, in my workplace. Yelling and main calling and ad hominem attacks are not what maybe the standard behavior. And so, as a state council member, I would seek to conduct myself at that level of professionalism.
I agree that we are held to a higher standard of behavior, both in public and in meetings. One of the things that I can say about our current council is that we disagree. Sometimes we strongly disagree, but we have enough respect and trust in each other that we know that we are each looking for the best for West Haven, even if we disagree. And so, I am really proud of the way that we get along, we can walk away and know that we disagree sometimes. You know, it's a hard fought, it's a hard fought fight, and, you know, I might be on the losing end, but we will come back, and we will be the council that works together. We can, we can move forward, even when we have strong disagreements.
I agree with that, we need to work together now. I'm just gonna name this little story, I'm not gonna prename it out there, this is just my story. If I've offended anyone, I will be promised, which I believe I have, and I know who you are, and you know who I am. who I am. I'm not going to name your names, but I'm sorry that I defended you, that I had the nerve and the gall to remember West Haven City Council. But that's okay. I have lived this life for six plus years. I'm used to it. So you need to get over it, because I'm over it. And I'm proud to be up here. I am very proud to be here. And I hope that in time, over the years, there'll be more like me up here. So I'm here as a representative, and I'm proud to represent. But as far as getting along with one another, I've never had a problem getting along with anyone, because my personality's too big. I'm a very friendly, I have a big personality, and you will get along with me. It's just what happens. You know, one and only, you go back to that. No, it's just what happens.
Yeah, it, it's vital that, that we treat others with respect always, that we always listen to each other, and that we work things out. And once again, whether you agree or disagree, it's always okay to, to walk away with agreeing to disagree. And anybody who knows me knows that I don't, I won't fight with anybody. I'll stand up for what is right, always, but I'll do it in a dignified way, and make sure that the person knows that whoever I'm dealing with, whether it be public, whether it be others on the council, whether it be mayor, whoever it might be, they'll know that I care, and that, that I care about how we leave the situation, and that at the very least, we know we can work together, and that we may not agree always. But that's simply just the way I am.
The city council actually has policies and procedures that we must follow as we sit up here, as we conduct ourselves, to make sure our meetings are ordered, and that we are respectful to each other when we do disagree, because we absolutely do disagree, which is so important. We don't always think the same. But I agree with Jim that professionalism is the standard, and that's the way we do present ourselves in, in any interaction with those when we're meeting in the grocery store, or those that come here and talk to us after the meeting because they didn't have a chance during the meeting. So.
All right. Now, the city currently sponsors several esports and recreational programs. Some people think that these programs should make, should all make money for the city. Others think that these programs should be provided at reasonable costs to families as a service to the community, even if the costs to provide the program exceed the fees paid. What are your thoughts? Which programs would you eliminate, if any? And it's up to you, Mystics.
I would not eliminate any, and hopefully we can add to our recreational program. West Haven's parks and recreation staff are excellent. We have an excellent recreation program, sports program. We have people coming here to be in our sports programs. I think that it should be at a reasonable cost for our families. I think that it's a service to the community to make sure that our adults and children have opportunities to play in sports and do those kinds of things. I would, the reasonable costs, I think we need to balance that. I think that we need to look at that and make sure that we are not subsidizing the programs. I think that we, in a way that we can have them pay for themselves at a reasonable cost. And I think that so far, we've been able to do that, and I think that we can continue.
Okay, I love the idea of this sports program, because back in my younger days, I coached basketball for probably ten years, no league. So I'm all about that. I mean, I'm all about, I'm just too old to do it now, but I've done it. I've coached kids all the way up to high school. And I have the plaques to prove it. So that is just what I do. I enjoy it. And I hope that we can, we can continue that. And I hope that the families, we can make it feasible where families can't afford it. I don't know about the subsidy always, because, but I like that program, and it keeps the kids engaged, and keeps them, you know, aware of what's going on. It just keeps them involved, and keeps them doing other things other than video games and cell phones.
I also would not eliminate any of these activities, and if anything, I would add more. I think variety is great for the youth, and they should have things to choose from, that they can succeed in, and that it will boost up, boost their confidence in the crowd. And it will get them away from the TVs and video games and their cell phones, and get them out, outside. So I'm, I'm a believer in that, whether or not the fees cover the expense of all of this. I'm okay that they don't. I'm okay that as a community, that we should be willing to subsidize if we need to, for the benefit of these youth. And so I'm actually okay. Now, obviously, it's great if they do, but if not, there's also other ways. Maybe offer money for families in need, or something to help them. So, but to give every child an opportunity, I think we need to make sure they all have the opportunity, and it's even encouraged. So I would even suggest more activities possible.
Yeah, we do have a great recreation program that has expanded. They have added activities and sports, and they do a great job. I believe at least the last two years, we've had the statistics brought before the councils, that we can always be reviewing those. What are we bringing in from this sport? Are they residents? Are they non-residents? Should be a differing fee for those that live outside the city, or just for, so, so we consider it all the time. It's not something that just needs to continue on. We are always looking at those numbers. And I do believe, as Claire said, it's important that everybody have that opportunity. And in looking over the budget, as long as we have those funds, let's make sure that, that those programs stay in place, and that they are reasonable. They do meet the needs of families.
My own youngest son participated in the baseball program when he was just a little kid, and we had a great time. It was a great service to the community. I would be in sport keeping the costs reasonable. I don't think city recreation programs should be a pro percent. As far as diversity, yes, we should have a diversity of different sports, just so that all kids have an opportunity to participate. Not all kids like basketball, or not all kids like baseball. So if anything, I would rather, as everyone said, probably add two. It makes I have to make a comment about generally being generationalist. Just because kids are rolling with the cell phones doesn't mean it's necessarily bad. It's just different. Every generation judges the generation below it. And it's not, again, it's not just like that. It's just different.
Service on the city council requires a regular and significant investment of time, but is well paid. What is your on-time, in-person attendance record if you are in a committee? And if elected, what is your on-time, in-person attendance commitment for work sessions and all meetings? Miss Call?
I am right there, right on time, in that seat. I am. I'm, I'm always wearing Smokes, reading, and on time. And that's just how I've been, because I've had to be that way, and I've been that way. So you won't have to worry about me not being in attendance, because I'll be here, and we'll see if chosen. And I'm retired. I have nothing better to do than to serve my community.
While I'm not retired, and I've always been very busy, but in my very busy schedule, now is actually a pretty good time for me to be more involved. I would plan on being here. I'm committed to anything that I commit to. I, I am here and will be here to everything. I guess unless I'm in the hospital for some reason. But other than that, I would be here all the time, because that's what I would commit. And what I had committed to when I decided to run. I wouldn't be running right now if I wasn't committed to being here and representing each of you at all meetings. So that would be my commitment to it.
I guess I'm really proud to say my attendance is a hundred percent. I've never missed a meeting. This is important. In, in the last run, somebody sent me a lot of questions and asked me, do you have time for this? And I said, no, I don't. But I'm gonna make the time. And I did. I missed things. I sacrificed for my family, because this is the commitment, like Claire said, that you make. I think I was late to one work section, one work session in my first year, because I've built Scott out, and I had to apologize to everybody when I got here. Otherwise, I've been here. I love to be here. It's important to be present, to do, the time investment is not just sitting here. It's so much more. There is so much research to do. I spend hours every week planning for these agendas, for these items, for these decisions that have to be made. So I'm a hundred percent committed.
So wait a minute, you guys are getting paid for this? It says well paid. So I have to, in the spirit of transparency, I have to ask or answer this question honestly. I'm a father, a husband, and a breadwinner. And I'm still, I'm not middle career, but I'm later in my career, and I have a very demanding job. The best I can, I can tell you is I will do my best to meet all meetings wherever, wherever possible. But again, I give a demanding job, like probably most of us in the audience, while I'm lost. I wish I was retired. I'll do the best I can, and to meet all meetings. And I appreciate what Carrie said. There's probably a lot of pre-meeting and post-meeting research and conversations that have to happen around the, around the position. So I commit to do my best.
Well, I am always on time. I can say that I am usually the first here, because I run on ski time, which is my family time. My husband runs on Dixon time, which is ten minutes late. So just know that I'm always on time. I love Zoom. The COVID, one of the things that the COVID pandemic did was give us the opportunities for Zoom. I have used that in the past, but only if I was unable to make it. I was excused for one meeting when we were on family vacation in Florida. Other than that, I have been here, either on Zoom or in person. It is a big obligation. There is a lot of research that we do. We spend a lot of time looking at things and trying to decide what decisions to make, what will be the best. It's not that we look at the packet and say, oh, okay, we're gonna vote on this tonight. We always do our, we always do our homework. And in fact, Carrie has made it that we get our packets the day after our planning commission meeting, so we have time to do our homework. But I, one hundred percent, yeah.
Thank you. All right. Last question for tonight. Tomorrow, the city council will be voting on a new annexation, annexation policy plan. That plan includes a map that shows the community of Taylor within West Haven's potential annexation boundaries. Do you support the future annexation of Taylor into West Haven? Why or why not? And what financial factors should be considered in the decision? Mr. Call?
First of all, I would say that I think it's good that we have a plan in place for any annexation that wants to happen within West Haven. They're wanting to come in, and so if they want to come in, we should have a plan on, on what we want to see as they come in. I do think Taylor is, is very open, and so they offer that, as a lot of open land and open area. I do understand that most time, most of the time when they want to annex in, it's because they're ready to develop that land, and they want, I guess they figure better development opportunities in West Haven. And so they then look to, to annex at that point. So once again, I, I like the idea of, of the fact that we can then say, you're welcome to join our city, and we can see why you want to come. But we do have stipulations that you would have to meet to be able to annex and come in. But they do bring in, of course, more people, brings in more fees and so forth, and therefore more income to the city.
All cities should have an annexation policy. And like Claire said, definitely my direction, which has been what's happened here, because that's been lacking in the past. Community Development Director brought this to us, to make sure that we do have this plan in place. Anybody that's annexing into the city, I think should be mutually beneficial. We just don't annex people because they want to come, but it has to be something that fits the needs of the city at that time. You would consider the infrastructure, the sewer system, and before you just say, hey, everybody, come on in. And that always has to be contiguous. So we're right, we're not gonna annex somebody and create an island. So it has to be what's right around us. So it's important to decide what we want that to look like, and have that in place in the policy plan.
To Carrie's point, I think it has to be mutually beneficial to the, to both, both parties. And that land's not going anywhere. I mean, I, I don't, as far as the timing is concerned, you could probably defer that decision and make it later if you, if you wanted to. As far as the financial factors, I can't remember, but I heard mainly that somebody has a water problem over there. And I wonder if that was a consideration as far as, I would imagine maybe the Taylor folks want to come into our good infrastructure. They can take that, if it takes some benefits from that. If they're, if they want to come and we're willing to take them, I don't see a problem with it. Yeah, it's got to be a mutual, it's got to be a win-win situation overall.
Well, when West Haven was initially developed, there was a vote with Cane'sville, Welson, and Taylor, who all voted to make the city of West Haven. As soon as West Haven was formed, the city of Taylor voted to do an annex for West Haven. So apparently now they want to come back. So I agree that it needs to be mutually beneficial, and that's a little bit harder, because we can say that we have people coming in, but since we have no property tax, there's really not a financial benefit to us to bring more people in. Usually, when you bring them in, they'll be paying property tax to the city. Since we have no property tax, that is not a consideration. So we need to be especially careful as we bring people in, that we are making sure that we are not just bringing them in because they want to be able to be using our, our infrastructure and things, but it needs to be mutually beneficial.
I do remember when Taylor was our grand annexation, and they kind of backed out at the last minute. So we'll just kind of think about that a little longer. But I don't really have a problem with it, as long as it's beneficial. It's, it's beneficial to West Haven. It's not a lot of money going out, a big cost for us. So I'm okay with it. But I still remember when they backed out. So, man, let's just really consider it and make sure it's, it's really a goal this time. I can assign something that says go back and out.
All right. Thanks. That, that's all the questions that we have today. What I want to do now is give each candidate some time for closing remarks. And we'll do ninety seconds for each candidate for some closing remarks. And, and we'll start with Ms. Call.
I don't have any closing remarks. I guess I would just say I really appreciated the opportunity and the trust it was given me to serve these last four years. It's been a great experience. It's never something that I ever, ever wanted. This is uncomfortable for me, but I've had to learn to make it sort of comfortable. Maybe after this time we've gotten feet wet, kind of feel better about it. But I got involved because I needed to. So it has been great. I feel like we have made a lot of change. I'm proud of what we have done. I'm proud of the things that I've accomplished myself in doing this. We've all had opportunities to sit on different committees, to spend varying amounts of time, depending on each council member. But it has, it has been a blessing to my family. They hear a lot about the city. They learn a lot about municipal government at a young age. So maybe they'll run at some point. But I truly am grateful that I've had this chance, and I would like to continue to serve as a council member for the next four years.
Before I, I'm gonna jump in really quick. As you introduce yourself, would you just say your name for the, for the videos? I don't know if they can see the name tags. So if you want to just say your name, and then we'll jump right over to Jim.
Carrie Call.
Jim McGrath. Appreciate the opportunity to come tonight and have a civic discussion in a very civilized manner, which is again contrasting with what we see more at, at a state and national level. I get voted in, I, I would appreciate the opportunity to serve my community at a greater level. Civic duty is something that I hold quite dear as one who has had opportunities to serve our country overseas. I've seen what As one who has had opportunities to serve our country overseas, I've seen what the damn, what democracy, the opposite of democracy looks like. And without civic participation and engagement, things go down in the quiet fast. And so service is important to me, and if, again, if I were to vote in, I would hope to serve valiantly, to use the word. Thank you.
I'm Kim Dixon. Four years ago when I ran, I was terrified. I wasn't sure what to expect, I wasn't sure what I would have to do, I wasn't sure of the time it would take, I wasn't sure of controversy or things like that. But I thoroughly enjoyed my time here. I have learned so many things. I have worked with the people on the city council, I've worked with the staff, I've worked with the residents of West Haven. We live in a great and beautiful place. We have opportunities here that a lot of others don't have. I would like to continue for the next four years. It's exciting, there's a bright future ahead of us, and I'm, I'm excited to keep going.
I'm Sheridan Milton, and I wish to serve my community. I'm dedicated to the public and to my community, and I wish to serve because I've had a family of servants. I've got police officers, I've got too many nurses to count. I've got a brother that used to work right over here, 4,000 South, this fire's changed, and I used to frequent regularly. And everyone's always served in my, in my family. We've got a family full of servants. So I just thought, okay, I'm going to get involved now, it's my time. So I would be honored to reach a goal, but, and I would appreciate it, and I'm ready to go to work for our city, and I know I'll do a great job because I used to work twice as hard. Thank you.
Clarence Kelly. Once again, as I started out, I'm grateful for, for all of you being here. And I'm grateful for your support. So once again, I would encourage each of you to reach out. Reach out to neighbors and friends about the things that you've heard and learned here tonight. I've always wanted to be involved and always have been involved, just in different ways. Like Kim mentioned, I don't think we ever know what we're getting ourselves into in almost everything new that we start in life. It's not until you get into it that you start to figure it out. I have no doubt that would be the same. I've not served on city council, I've seen the meetings and so forth, but never served in it. But I've been serving in West Haven really since we got here. And so I'll continue to serve in any whatever way, whether it's city council or just continuing to help with activities or any other things that are happening in the city. That's just who we are. I believe that we always, if we want to see change, if we want to see improvement, it all starts in your own home, but from there, it branches out. It branches out to your neighbors and then to your community, and you just keep branching out as you go. So just remember that as citizens, we can always do that, and that's our part. Start with your own home and then branch out from there. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Let's give everybody a round of applause. It's my guts and my courage to stand up here and field questions like that, so I think we want to thank them. Also, thanks to the city staff and reporter Emily Green for tech support tonight. We want to remind those here today that we have a building till eight o'clock, and you're welcome to come and mingle with the candidates. We have these recorded, they'll be on Facebook and on our YouTube page. And I do want to do one more shameless announcement, shameless plug. March 5th of next year is caucus night, so all those, please mark that on your calendar and be in attendance to support your community and so, so keep that in your thoughts and your minds. And once again, thanks for, thanks, everybody, and we'll let them mix and mingle, and thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight.